Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of Garden City Planning Commission. It's Thursday, August eighth, 2024, at six thirty P M. First order of business would be to rise and say pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Lucina. Would the Secretary take the roll call, please?
Chairperson May.
Here.
Commissioner Steenberg did notify us he'll be absent. Commissioner Walz.
Here.
Commissioner Kalidus Walz will be absent. Commissioner King.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
There.
And Commissioner Bazzi did notify us he'll be absent. You do have a quorum before.
Okay. We need a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? Take your role, please.
Commissioner Walz.
Aye.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye.
It's passed.
Uh, next is approval of minutes for the regular meeting of July eleventh, 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from July eleventh, 2024. Support.
Any comments, corrections? Hearing none. Take your role, please.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Walz.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye.
S four zero.
Uh, next item is public comment on non-agenda items only. If there's someone here who wishes to speak on an item that's not on our agenda, this would be at the time where you can come forward to the podium and say what you wish. Seeing no one, we'll move on to business items. First item is PPL twenty-four, F zero zero nineteen. This is a request for special land use and site plan approval to redevelop an existing minor auto repair garage at three zero two five four Ford Road in the C two community business zoning district. Start off with our consultant's report. Mr. Ortega?
Yes. Good evening, you, uh, good evening, Chair, Mr. Chair, uh, everyone. Um, we're here tonight to consider, uh, this proposed, uh, special land use and site plan review for the property located at the northeast corner of Ford Road and Henry Rough Road. The site is the location of Hollywood Sound, which is a minor auto repair facility. Uh, it is located on the southern half of the site along Ford Road frontage, and the northern part of the site is currently an unimproved vacant grass lot. So the applicant is proposing to construct a new minor auto repair garage building, uh, for the Hollywood Sound on the northern portion of the lot, then demolish the existing structure and, and construct a new multi-tenant, uh, commercial building along the Ford, the Ford Road lot line, a surface parking lot that would then be located between the two buildings. When, with this proposal, with this development was originally proposed, uh, during a review of this configuration, um, it was noted that, uh, when it comes to minor auto repair facilities, the zoning ordinance does state that they shall, uh, that minor auto repair buildings shall maintain a forty-foot minimum setback from property lines that are, is adjacent, uh, to zoned or used residential, uh, structures. Uh, there is an existing single-family residence that is zoned to family on the northern property line. Uh, so the applicant did approach the ZBA and at their meeting, um, in back in February, there was discussion, the original proposal was for the building to be located, uh, approximately, uh, I believe it was twenty-two feet from the northern property line. Uh, during the course of discussion, uh, the applicant modified their configuration so that it would be a thirty-foot setback between the northern property line and the auto repair facility. Uh, and the zoning board of appeals did grant a ten-foot variance from the forty-foot standard to allow this building to be located thirty feet from that northern property line. Um, with regards to minor auto repair facilities, currently in the C two zoning district, which is where this is located, they also require special land use review and approval for the construction of new facilities. Since this is an expansion, uh, this building will actually be increased, uh, by a few hundred square feet. Um, it does require, and since, uh, there's also its relocation, it does require the, the land use to be, uh, the use to receive special land use can review and consideration in addition to, to site plan review, even though this use has existed on the site, uh, previously. So, uh, the review letter in front of you regards, uh, it covers both special land use and site plan review criteria. I'm just going to summarize, uh, some of the highlights from special land use review. Um, the first and, uh, criteria that we take a look at is compatibility of the proposed use with adjacent uses. Uh, as noted, the site has already existed as a minor auto repair facility. It's located well on the southern side of the site. It has existed there for an extended period of time. Um, to the east of the site is a outdoor storage yard and the, um, uh, the, um, family heating and cooling offices. Uh, to the south on the other side of Ford Road is a Shell gas station, and to the west is a Subway restaurant, and along Ford Road is our major commercial corridor. It's, it's full of high, uh, high-traffic, uh, commercial uses. To the north of the site, uh, is zoned, uh, R two, and it is, uh, occupied currently by a single-family home. Um, so when it comes to compatibility of this proposed, uh, movement of the site to another portion, um, you know, the adjacent commercial properties have a similar level of activity as this proposed use, and they have been compatible and capable of operating adjacent to this existing use, uh, for an extended period of time. In addition, the traffic volume level activity, uh, and it, or the intensity of this use, uh, is typical for your auto-oriented uses. As a minor auto repair facility, there will not be any storage of outdoor, uh, excuse me, there not be any outdoor storage of vehicles on the site overnight. So that limits its, uh, its characteristic as being a use that's different from, uh, normal commercial retail uses. So we believe, based on its past history of, uh, collaboration with adjacent uses and, and the, um, characteristic of the proposed use, that the site would be, the, the new use, the expansion of the use, would be compatible with the existing uses. We look at compatibility with the master plan as well. Um, within the master plan, uh, this site and actually properties of the east and north is zoned, is planned for central business district. Uh, it's an expansion from our core central business district at the Middle Belt and, and, uh, Ford Road intersection out to this area. Um, however, we do note that, uh, the existing configuration of the, uh, of the city has our downtown at Middle Belt and Ford, and as it transitions out from that location, it does start to transition to more auto-oriented. We want to have more pedestrian-oriented uses at Middle Belt and Ford. We haven't developed that concentration yet that would necessitate expansion of it yet. We still have, we are still developing it at the core. So that's why, uh, on the edges, and this being on the edge of the, of the perceived final configuration of downtown, it's starting to transition to auto-oriented. So if this use were to be approved, we believe that the, the configuration will be consistent with the land use pattern of the, uh, that's currently involved, uh, currently existing in the city, and it would be compatible with the goals and objectives of the master plan, allowing for, uh, continual, uh, commercial investment in the community. When it comes to, uh, minor auto repair garages, there are some specific standards that have to be met, uh, that are outlined in the zoning ordinance. The, the site meets a majority of those air, minimum area lot width and setback standards. Um, some specifics need to be addressed. For example, the ingress and egress drive has to be have a minimum, uh, width of thirty-one feet. Currently it's proposed as twenty-five, so we recommend changing that. Uh, that, that does have to be changed. Um, the site need, has to provide a minimum six-inch curb around the perimeter of the, of the vehicle parking lot. Um, that's a requirement of a minor auto repair garage. And then when it comes to the layout, uh, specific characteristics of the minor auto repair garage are required, such as everything had, all the equipment has to be inside the building. Uh, there can't be any, uh, there well, there shall not be any, uh, repair facility, uh, operations done outside of it. There cannot be any outdoors, outside storage of vehicles. And then also, this is intended only for minor repair. There cannot be any vehicle sales on the site. So, uh, any approval granted by the planning commission, we recommend adding notes to the site plan that the use shall operate in compliance with these, uh, specific standards. Looking at some of the other requirements for special land use, uh, for example, the, the fact that the, uh, we look at their public services, now this proposed addition and even the, the new construction of the, uh, multi-tenant building, uh, you know, is not going to have an extensive increase on the level of utility services provided. Typically, commercial uses have a lower, uh, level of need or, uh, or utilities, including enter, uh, electricity, gas, and, uh, and, and water and sewer services. So it's tip, and with Ford Road having mains for all these utilities, uh, they are designed in, for, to have capacity to accept, uh, new connections. And so these, this expansion at this site and the new square footage will not tax the existing, uh, utility services in the area. One, one final thing, uh, we do look, whenever we approve special uses, to consider the enhancement of the surrounding environment. Uh, by allowing for this use, there will be more retail and service opportunities for adjacent residents. Uh, and then this new configuration is proposing and required to provide a screening between this site and adjacent residences. So that will be an enhancement to have additional screening. Plus, the building configuration is proposed to have a solid wall for that auto repair facility to, to minimize further any noise, minimize any impact to adjacent residences. So we believe, um, that provided they comply with these standards, the site and the proposed use will be compatible and, uh, with the proposed, uh, location. So we recommend, in the end, that, uh, we would advise the planning commission to recommend a city council approval of this proposed, uh, minor auto repair garage reconfiguration contingent upon the applicant receiving site plan approval. Those are all the issues related to special land use. We can go over those specifically, or I can address site plan, uh, now or at a later time.
Uh, why don't we, uh, well, should we, uh, should we consider the site plan before we go on to the public hearing?
A lot of these site plan issues aren't necessarily, except for the screening, because that is one aspect of the, uh, site plan that is related to the special use because of the compatibility. So I would point, I would point that out. All the other issues related to site plan are just compliance with the zoning ordinance standards. So I can go over those if you like.
Okay, well, while we're at it, why don't we continue on then and, uh,
So, then very briefly, just going over the highlights of, uh, the zoning requirements for the site plan. Um, the applicant has provided building elevations. Uh, they're modern style with, uh, new materials. They're seen, that will be very attractive. We would just revise, advise the applicant to provide, uh, propose the color for these materials be noted on the site plan. There are no, no color, so we'd like to see what those colors will be. Uh, when it comes to the parking lot, they are providing thirty-eight total parking spaces. Um, based on the size of the building, that's multi-tenant, and based on the minor auto repair garage, they should have enough spaces. One of the requirements for minor auto repair is number of employees. So, but the applicant didn't indicate the number of employees. Provided there are no more than three employees at any one time in the minor auto repair, uh, then this proposed configuration would meet our parking standards. So the applicant would just have to indicate the number of employees is three or less.
Okay.
Um, then getting to what I was mentioning, with regards to landscaping, uh, they have provided a landscape plan. It is very detailed. It provides a lot of the, uh, requirements. They're in compliance with the zoning ordinance. We just point out three things. One, um, when it comes to residential screening, the applicant is currently proposing fourteen arborvitae, each approximately three to four feet high along that northern property line in a, in a zigzag basically configuration to screen the use from the adjacent residents. Uh, so we recommend the planning commission should provide your comments if you feel like that proposed size and, uh, configuration of landscaping is appropriate for the screening, or if you feel like there might be a need for some, either change in the size of the, uh, landscaping or some additional plantings necessary to provide an adequate, uh, buffer between this site and the residence in the north. One other thing, one, second thing, um, the applicant is proposing one species of, uh, deciduous tree, one type of evergreen and one shrub. We were recommend, and the only issue with this is, uh, if any of those one, if any of those species become susceptible to a disease or infestation, then they could lose all this, all the particular species on site. So we recommend, uh, the applicant, uh, switch, uh, provide at least one other species of each type, uh, that's native to Michigan to, to minimize, to also protect their investments. That way they don't lose all their trees, and then also, uh, provide for more variety on the site. And then finally, they, they should need to indicate a method of irrigation for this landscaping. One of their, uh, two other final notes, when the dumpster, uh, proposed, they're proposing an angled dumpster enclosure. Uh, it seems like if the dumpster was, uh, reconfigured so that it's rear, uh, the, uh, eastern edge of it was parallel to the property line, made it a straight shot for the dumpster, for the, the dump trucks to enter and exit the dumpster enclosure, that might be a better configuration possibly than having them to swing around. That's a possible, that's one recommendation. We would just like to note that, um, if there are going to be any additional, uh, mechanical equipment on the site, they need to be screened as well. If there's any emergency generators or any kind of, uh, other type of equipment, typically we do require them, uh, to be screened. So those details just need to be verified. But with regards to the, um, special land use, we believe the, the, the method and type and quantity of screening should, um, just be confirmed as proposed. It's sufficient? Or if you'd like to see that enhanced?
Is that it for your review?
Oh, excuse me. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, that, that can make, uh, those are the summary of our, uh, site plan review comments. We would recommend that the planning commission grant site plan approval contingent on the applicant submitting a revised site plan that addresses the issues, uh, in our letter.
Well, let's move on to the applicant. Is the applicant present? Does she care to step up and, uh,
Sure.
make some comments?
Kassan Kalav, design engineer. Uh, thank you very much. Um, we're okay with going with all the recommendations that Mr. Ortega mentioned, and, uh, we will revise the plans and resubmit again. Uh, the only one thing is, if I, if I remember correctly, in the ZBA, uh, the neighbor to the north didn't want a fence. He wanted more landscaping, more than a screen wall. But we are okay of putting the screen wall and also the landscaping.
Okay. There was a question about the, uh, the dumpster, uh, the way it's angled on the parking lot there. Is there a reason why it's angled in that manner?
No, it could be straightened.
So that could be straightened out?
Yes.
In some sites, angled dumpster is appropriate, but in this, just because it can't fit into a more of a, further south, closer to a parking space, it just wouldn't work that way. Might as well just have it straight. I mean, it's not the end of the world if it stays as it is, but it just seems like it might be easier, because a dump truck is going to have to back out anyway. Might as well make it a straight shot for it.
It would seem like if it was straight, it would be easier for the, uh, truck to come in and pick up the dumpster.
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Did you have anything else you wanted to?
No.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, if I could just, you brought up the arborvitae. My quick math is they're like eight feet apart from each other. So is, is that the plan, or are you considering adding more for the, for, I think it was the north side screening?
We can increase that in that area especially.
I'm just not sure how that would be a screen if they were eight feet apart.
I'm sorry if they were.
Again, I just, it's, your, your front elevation is the hundred and thirteen feet.
We stagger them, like.
Okay. I mean, they must be pretty big if they're eight feet apart.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just asking the question based upon Mr. Ortega's observation. Are you, could you add more arborvitae to actually be a screen?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, moving on, we'll open the public hearing at, uh, six fifty-two. If there's anyone here who wishes to come forward to, uh, make a comment or identify yourself and, uh,
My name is Ryan Daniels. Do I need to give any other information, like my address or anything? I've never come up before.
Okay. Could you speak up a little bit?
My name is Ryan Daniels. Um, I've never made a comment before. Do I need to give any additional information other than my name?
Uh, and where do you live?
Uh, Garden City on two nine nine six seven Box Street.
Okay. And what's your comment?
Uh, so this is supposed to be a multi-tenant building. Is there any, um, ideas of what those other tenants might be or the size of that space? What, how that use area would use?
The building along Ford Road?
Yeah, the one that's been discussed, proposed, yeah.
Because there's, yeah, the, the building in back is the repaired garage, and then the new one up in, on Ford Road is a multi-tenant. Uh, if we could ask the applicant if they have, uh, any tenants for those spaces or if they're?
Uh, they don't have any tenants so far. It will be open for lease.
Okay.
And the front one, they don't have any tenant, and the back is going to be the same. Hollywood Sound is going to move to the back.
The same company, yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
There, there appear to be five, is it five separate store locations?
Well, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be built as a shell first, and then let's say if there's somebody that wants two spaces, they can rent two spaces or one.
Seventy-five hundred square feet. Hope that helps.
So, so, and, so potentially there could be five fourteen-hundred-ish square foot buildings, but as they said, they, sometimes they take two, two spaces or three. Well, it depends on the needs of the tenants. But it's zone C two, so that will govern the type of uses that are permitted in there. Uh, C three is our more auto-oriented use, well, so they wouldn't allow, you know, well, and it's not configured for things like a car wash right now or, um, um, major auto repair. Um, and it couldn't have things like, uh, a smoke shop or anything like that.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward to comment? Yes, come on.
Crystal Pelco, Family Heating, um, three oh two one zero Ford Road. Two quick questions. Will there be any screening to our business or just the existing fence that is there right now?
There's, uh, no screen on that side proposed. Um, is, I don't believe that's required between commercial properties.
That's correct. They're, they're, they're not proposing anything now, and they, they aren't required.
Oh, no, I'm not. I just was wondering, because I'm concerned about theft, because it happens all the time. And then I, also, we have to clean that fence line all the time. So I'd rather just have a wall where I don't have to clean it. Um, the other thing was communications. So we just invested about forty miles of fiber into the city of Garden City. Family Heating paid for that. Um, and I want to make sure that our communications won't be interrupted, you know, um, anything like that, because it goes all the way. They, we didn't have any fiber there in our city. And we went all the way across, um, Henry Roth's and their property and our property, and now anybody can get fiber that they want to, but I want to make sure we're not cut off, because that's our like.
This is above ground?
Yeah, above ground.
Okay.
So that was just my two things. Communications and then, you know, like power and stuff, so that we're not interrupted is all I'm.
I don't believe they should be interrupted at all, should they?
No, uh, especially, um, with those type of utilities, they, they have some type of easement.
Okay.
So whatever.
Because it kind of goes through the middle of our property and to the back of their, so I just want to make sure I'm not interrupted in any way.
It kind of goes through the middle of their parking lot, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they've, they've designed the building and its loc, size and location so that it doesn't impact the utility poles.
Okay, that's perfect. Just making sure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to make a comment or has a question? Seeing no one, then we'll close the public hearing at six fifty-six. Were there any communications?
No, we did not receive any.
Okay. Well, we'll move on to, uh, discussion with the planning commission, uh, starting off with the, uh, special land use. Uh, first I'd like to say that when the ZBA voted to allow the, uh, the variance on the rear setback, the, the main reason they, they went for that was because the resident to the north approved of it and actually liked it better than the configuration that they had where they didn't need a variance, because they could have built the, uh, the garage building backing up to the, um, Family Heating property on the east side, rather than the other configuration where it backs up to the north. But they figured that if they did that, there would be a lot more noise and other activity, lighting, all of that, that would affect the, uh, neighbors to the north and to the west. So that, I just wanted to explain our, our motives in, uh, in approving that. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I think Alex Cuddy's willing to do what, uh, recommendations are, so I think that's pretty cut and dry.
Uh, I think we should have a stipulation for the screen fence, like how far the arborvitae are apart, so it'll actually be a screen. A three-foot arborvitae is not going to provide very much screening.
There are, uh, there are currently arborvitae at, at that lot line, aren't there?
Yes, there, there are currently arborvitae there, but they are on the single-family side. The, the property owner, the single-family resident did put them there. Um, so the, uh, arborvitae, when they grow, they, they tend to grow and create a hedge, provided they're planted close enough. Um, and then if you notice, they, they, they plant them in staggered rows. I guess that's a better way to describe it than a zigzag. And the intent is so that way, um, it doesn't have to be just one hedge row, it'd be like multiple rows of hedges. And so it's just a matter of, um, planting them, uh, on center based on the, uh, proposed, uh, uh, configuration that's by, uh, by landscape architects. And I, I'll be honest, I'm not sure exactly what dimension is. I want to say probably six foot might be better, uh, for them, because it, the space allows them to grow, and then that creates enough of a row.
Well, and if they're.
Why, it's, it's staggered, like it's.
And if they're staggered, they'll be actually be three feet apart.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Right, that's the other reason that you, that you do that. It's more effective than just one, one row and a row, because then it still takes time for them to grow, and then it'll be more that way. And then the other bene, I mean, the other benefit of this configuration, once again, is that he's only going to, the, the resident's only going to have the rear wall, um, to them, so they're not going to be hearing or looking at, you know, if the building was turned, then they could see the side angle of the thing of, uh, activity in the garage.
There aren't even any openings in the rear wall.
Right, there are no openings.
It's a solid wall.
Yep, not even a door or anything.
No, the door is on the end of the building. Both ends of the building actually have.
Right, so, so it's designed that way, so that it meets the code, because they do need exit, other entry and exit doors for the, for the employees, but they don't have to be in the back. So there's another method of screening that's, that's helpful.
Okay, uh, any other, uh, comments, questions?
We're, we're doing the special land use first?
Yeah, yeah, we make the recommendation for the special land use. And along with, uh, the items from, uh, section one fifty-four, one thirty-seven, uh, D through I, we also need to, uh, specify that it would also be contingent on the applicant receiving. we also need to, uh, specify that it would also be contingent on the applicant receiving, uh, site plan approval. If, uh, someone would care to make a motion for recommendation to council?
I'll make a motion for, uh, contingent on approval of the site plan, uh, for special use recommendation inclusive of no vehicle sales, no major vehicle repairs and consistent with the C two zone.
Again, we need those, uh, items, uh, D through I.
For three.
For the site plan?
On, no, for this is, uh, this is in the special land use. On page three. Section three. The underlined sections.
Okay, let me restate the motion. Contingent on site plan approval, I make a motion for a special use recommendation inclusive of section three, A through I and the letter from McKenna, inclusive of, uh, no vehicle sales and no major vehicle repairs consistent with the C two zone.
There are.
Second.
Motion taken seconded. Any, uh, comments on the motion? Would you take the roll, please?
Commissioner King?
Aye.
Commissioner Walls?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Chairperson may?
I have to abstain because of already voting on this at the zoning board of appeals.
Motion does pass, three zero.
So the motion is carried. Moving on to the site plan. Do we have any comments on the, uh, site plan? I know we need to, uh, be a little more specific about the, uh,
Color.
The screening. And we need the, uh, we need some notes added about the number of employees, the minor for the repair garage and the proposed color of the material on the facade. And the, uh, location of the, uh, dumpster.
I think the dumpster's noted where it's going. I think we just wanted to straighten that, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Chairperson may?
Yes.
Just one question. I just thought of it. Um, given that the applicant does not yet have tenants for the building and given that it does it's adjacent to an R three, have you thought about any hours of operation?
Um, no.
Where the tenants is, as far as, I don't know, I'm not sure what is all included in the C two, but I just wonder if we should have something, given that it is, backs into a residential area.
Well, if, um, the way it would work would be that if, if the, uh, any, any tenant that wants to go in there that would have extended hours as part would require special land use approval.
Okay.
Um, based on their type, their type of use.
The repair garage itself.
Right, exactly. Cause the repair garage is, is, is the one that is explicitly just been recommended for approval. And then if anything were to go into the front building that requires special land use, and I can list that in a second, um, they would have to come before you, before you at that point in time. So, uh, so, you know, things that are permitted by right are any type of re- well, most type of retail uses, um, service uses such as salons or repair shops. Carryout restaurants are permitted by right in the C two, such in addition to standard restaurants. Uh, laundries and dry cleaners are permitted. Uh, things that require special use approval in C two would be, uh, something like, and so also these are gonna be restricted based on this current configuration. But technically, if there was a financial institution with drive-through, that requires special land use, funeral home.
Do you know what the hours of the current garage are?
Uh, actually, no, do not. The applicant didn't indicate that.
Do you want to try to call the owner and see if he has hours of operation?
Yeah. And then others are open-air businesses, so if they wanted to have some type, typically that refers to like lumber yards or something, so, uh, hotels or motels, fast food restaurants with drive-through, um, so those are all really uses that have their own separate configuration. It's more of their characteristic of their configuration that does that, in addition to use and their hours of operation. The only one that might be an issue is if, uh, would be a secondhand store. Secondhand stores in the C two do require special use approval. So if that came in, that would require, but another type of retail. And then there are other uses that aren't even permitted in C two, that would require C three, like, um, as I men- as I mentioned, like a.
Did you get a answer?
Nine to six.
Nine to six?
Yeah.
I think that would be fine. So hours would be restricted to from nine to six?
Seems very reasonable. Well, I wouldn't necessarily wanna impose that on the, the, the front.
Not on the front, but on the repaired garage.
I, I was just asking the question to see if there was any kind of a, a ceiling. I don't know that it needs to be as early as six, in my opinion.
If we could make it a little later and if they wanna close at six, they still can, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking like by ten P M. Is what I was thinking.
Well, that would be, that would be after dark in a lot of, in certain times of the year.
The only, the only thing is, uh, your, your special land use question in front of you is specifically for the minor auto repair garage. So once again, if something comes before you that is specifically requires special land use approval, then you're given the authority to regulate the, the, the hours of operation. But under, but, um, standard retail and, and service uses, they, they can stay open. I, I guess technically they can stay open as late as they want.
Yeah.
But then, of course, then they have to abide by all the noise ordinances, all the other, other issues. But yeah, then typically that's, when somewhere, though the, when the special land use in front of you, uh, that's when they have the time to, uh, regulate their hours. This, because it's multi-tenant.
They're still going to have the parking lot lights on it, because the stores in front can stay open later.
Right.
And I don't know how much noise is generated from the Hollywood Sound operation.
I'm not sure, but the, yeah, I'm probably, well.
I live very close to there. I don't think very much.
Yeah.
Okay.
So do you think it's an issue that we need to address?
I don't think it, yeah. I, I do, I was just trying to understand, but if Mr. Ortega is saying there'd be special land use, um, applicants in the event that one of the stores in front needed a later hours, I'm good.
So we'll just let it.
I'm good.
Okay. Well, we need the, uh, approval for the, uh, the site plan. And, uh, we have, under the recommendations, we have several items that should be listed as contingent.
Did we wanna discuss what that facade color was? Did we, you were talking about a color of the elevation?
That should be noted, yeah.
Do, what is it gonna be noted to?
Well, we can leave that up to, uh, Mr. Ortega and the site administrator.
I think C. C. Well, let's see, heavily.
Okay.
Along with all of these others that are listed.
So A through G.
These, they just have to resubmit the plan with a lot of notes on it, basically.
Gotcha. I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve, approve site plan review contingent upon recommendations from, uh, Mario, item one, A, C through G. And number two, the, uh, approval from the city engineer and fire marshal.
Okay, is there a, uh, or?
Second.
Motion taken seconded. Any comments? Corrections on the motion? Hearing none. Take the roll, please.
Commissioner Walls?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner King?
Aye.
Chairperson may?
And again, I have to abstain because of the same reasons. So the site plan is approved. And, um, next you have to go to the council for your, uh, special land use approval. And, uh, see, Mr. Ortega, from, see where you go from there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next we have zoning ordinance amendment. This, uh, let's see, which one are we doing here? Does it matter?
First of all, um, if I may, chairperson was labeled for the residential parking standards.
It's a spatter one.
Okay, so, um, okay, this is the, uh, public hearing for the, uh, proposed amendment language on accessory structures and residential parking standards. Uh, Mr. Ortega, if you'd like to start us off?
Uh, yes, this is, um, language that the planning commission has considered, uh, over the past several months to do address, uh, two, two major issues. One, uh, is modification to accessory building standards. Um, the building department initially brought this issue up, uh, because, uh, they wanted to codify a requirement for having rat walls in accessory structures, because it was an issue found throughout the city. And while most, uh, property owners felt, uh, understood the need to have rat walls, not all were complying. So this amendment initially started out that way and it includes that requirement for a rat wall or other type of, uh, structure that will deal with rodent issues. But then also we took the opportunity to address, uh, and codify some other issues with this regard, materials related to accessory structures. Um, and then, uh, we also allowed for the, uh, for lots that are greater than twenty thousand square foot, have the opportunity to have additional square footage for their accessory structures. So rather than some of our smaller lots that, that are capped at fifteen hundred, the, the larger lots are, or excuse me, twelve hundred currently, uh, the larger lots, uh, have the ability, would have the ability under these amendments to, uh, to have up to two thousand square feet of accessory structures on site. And then we regulated, uh, modified some of the standards for, uh, collection boxes, because we were starting to see a few of those pop up in the city and, and wanted the opportunity to, uh, make sure that they're, um, properly regulated, um, with regards to, their duration, modifying it so they're only, uh, on-site for a hundred and eighty days in a twelve-month period, and also making sure they're adequately spaced out. So the modification would require collection boxes to have leased on a lot that's two thousand feet away from another collection box. And then, uh, the second amendment dealt with, uh, residential parking standards, moving them from, uh, an odd location in the ordinance from the schedule regulations into the parking requirements. And then just, uh, reworded them slightly, but basically also allowed at this point now, these would allow for, um, residents, residents to, um, have an additional wider driveway on their, uh, site that, that would allow them to park vehicles in the, in potentially in the front of the building, uh, residence, I should say. And it also allows, this would also allow for some of our residents that are on our major roads, uh, such as Cherry Hill and Inxter, to have a T turnaround, uh, included on their site, so that way they don't have to back up into oncoming traffic. This would codify the ability for them to put in a little T turnaround and so they can back in and out in a forward direction safely. So those are the proposed amendments, uh, in this, in this first round of, uh, changes.
Okay. Well, uh, now we'll open the public hearing for, uh, public comments for the proposed ordinance amendments at, uh, seven seventeen. If there's anyone that wishes to come forward, yes, sir?
Hi, uh, do I need to introduce myself again?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Ryan Daniels, address two nine nine six seven Box Street. Uh, for the, the rat wall, uh, what would be considered a, an accessory structure? Would that include a patio, like a slab patio or a shed? What does that include?
It's, it would only include, uh, an actual structure, so a patio is technically just, uh, a surface improvement.
Okay.
And it's not raised above. Technically even a, technically a deck is a structure, but it doesn't require a rat, rat wall. Anything, any detached accessory structure, meaning having walls and a roof, would be required to it.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have a question or a comment? Okay, seeing none. Are there any written communications, uh, concerning this?
We have not received any.
Okay.
Sorry, I had, I actually had a question.
Sorry. Uh, for the parking standard, um, uh, in, I think it was March, you were talking about this, too. You were also going back and forth about trying to avoid front yards that were full of concrete. Has, have you discussed that any further in, in these current changes? Have you addressed that?
Well, I think we have to a certain extent. This, uh, also limits the amount of, um, width that a driveway can be. It also has standards for circular drives. It allows for them, but it does have standards and requires a certain amount of green space to go along with them.
Okay.
So there, there are some restrictions in that respect.
Twenty percent?
Twenty percent.
Is what we put into the ordinance.
Yeah, the they're allowed, allowed to go in front of the house, twenty percent of the house's width, is that what?
No more than twenty percent.
No more than twenty percent.
Okay. All right, yeah, cause there was a couple houses on Box Street that are, and I think the street just north of Bach
Mm-hmm.
that are full of concrete and it makes you wonder about the, uh, sewer system and how it handle, how it can handle that additional runoff if more houses start to contribute to that runoff.
Well, we also, just if you're interested, we also have a twenty feet, twenty foot width limit as well.
Okay.
So what we're trying to do is solve for the nineteen fifties brick ranches where someone might be locked into a single drive and giving, you know, a little bit more space
Yeah. Yeah, and that makes sense.
without paving the whole front yard.
Yep, and, yeah, typical families have more than one vehicle nowadays, so, so I think that's a good balance.
That's right.
Okay, uh, we'll close the public hearing at seven twenty. Uh, is there any comment or discussion from the commissioners?
Do you have maybe a question? Or, does this get proposed to the city council or are we, are we?
Yeah, so you're, uh, once again, this would be a recommendation to council and then council would, uh, they don't need a public hearing on their own, similar to everything else, they, they have, um, the authority to grant, actually grant the change in the, in the language.
You ready for a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion. A motion to approve and recommend to city council the amendments to sections one five four point zero zero five, one five four point one three seven, one five four point one three eight, one five four. one five four point zero zero five, one five four point one three seven, one five four point one three eight, one five four point two six two. And for permit uses and addition, and promote investment in the city.
Support?
Okay, motion is made and supported, recommend approval. Any comments on the motion?
Well, you know what, I'm sorry. I apologize. I think you said one five four zero zero five.
Well. Yeah, that's the
That's the next one, I think.
Yeah, I think that might be the next one. I was just double checking the section numbers. So
That's our driveway, the one that we just talked about.
Right, that's part of it, but I think you included like one three seven, is that correct? One three seven is more, uh, with regards to our next one, which is about the C two standards.
Okay, so I need to remove, amend the motion or remove section one five four one three seven.
Okay, one three seven is not part of the motion. Is that the sort of, was the support?
Yeah, there's Okay, maybe we just take a step back. So there, the, I believe the one we were talking about is modifications to accessory buildings, correct?
Yeah.
So that starts off one five four zero two point zero two two, which does include the driveway. We didn't talk about this one yet.
All right, so. So it should one five four zero, zero five two. No. Why don't we?
So it would be, it would be, uh, one five four point zero two two, zero two five, and then zero zero five, zero six nine.
Yep. Is that?
Yes. That is, I, I support that.
Okay, motion made and supported. Any questions?
No.
Take your role, please.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Walls?
Aye.
Chairperson may.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next public hearing is for more, uh, zoning ordinance amendments to the C two district. Uh, Mr. Ortega?
Yeah, so these are our first attempt at addressing some of the issues that we brought up, that was brought up during the joint meetings between council and planning commission and DDA. Just, um, is the, one of the issues we talked about was trying to have a little bit more creativity and, uh, creativity on the one hand, but also allowing for some flexibility on the other. And, uh, one thing we found was that, um, recent demand, uh, was out there, the, the, for, um, for gas stations and car washes. And the issue was that the, the current zoning standards, uh, and the current available land in the city didn't allow for those two to connect and allow for new garages, uh, new, new, excuse me, new gas stations or new, um, C two, or excuse me. The existing language didn't allow for new garage, car washes and new gas stations. And so while, you know, we understand that's an auto-oriented locate, uh, use, uh, the issue is that, that, that there has been a high demand in other communities. And having a reinvestment and a reinvigoration of those type of uses in the city in the appropriate locations could help spur reinvestment in other communities. We found that in other communities, when new, a new use comes in, the other, uh, the other existing uses tend to reinvest in their sites. Kind of lifting all boats situation. So, and this was a, an idea to allow for, to slightly alter the C two district to allow for car washes and gas stations in them on sites that are large enough to accommodate them. And specifically, we were thinking about certain areas, uh, like the northern Mill, Millavell corridor to allow for some of those opportunities. So all this would do, would modify C two to allow for, uh, car washes and gas stations after special land use approval. You still need special land use approval. They would have to come before you to be reestablished, to be established. And they would have to meet the, uh, landscaping setbacks and compatibility requirements. They're all involved with special land use. And the other issue being, the minimum lot area we're proposing is substantial. So anyone that's proposing, that's, uh, gonna make this investment is gonna have a lot, ample land to make sure that these uses don't have any kind of, uh, negative impact on adjacent residences.
Okay. Uh, let's move on to the, um, public hearing then. I'll open the public hearing at seven twenty seven. Concerning these changes, is there anyone? Yes, sir.
On a roll today. Uh, Ryan Daniels, uh, two nine nine six seven Box Street. Uh, so I grew up in Plymouth and they had a lot of, uh, gas stations and car washes mixed. And I think if done right, that's, uh, a good combination. Uh, I think the Big B is a good example on Ann Arbor Road, uh, in Plymouth by Lily, Ann Arbor and Lily, I believe. Um, so there's, uh, Mark, they have the Big B, they also have a U-Haul attached to it. Uh, I think there's the car wash on there too. Um, so there's a lot of potential for mixed, uh, uses and tenants for that. That can also be a part of the city's plan to reinvigorate some of the business. Uh, it's, and if, with the gas station and the market, you can have a lot of small businesses with inside the main tenanted area as well. So there's a lot of flexibility, I think, in that. So, so as a community member, I think that would be a potentially really good idea to have, so.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else wish to comment on these changes? Okay, seeing none. Do we have any written communications?
We have not received any.
Okay. Then I'll close the public hearing at seven twenty eight. Is there any, uh, discussion, questions or comments on the mission?
Section one five four one three eight, the, where's the, basically the layouts of the vacuums on the property? Right now, this proposed that we're limiting them to the vacuums in the rear of the property, like potentially it can back up to residential neighborhoods. So I don't think we should necessarily limit them. Let's say if they go into Ramies or on Millavell, if the vacuums are in the back and the, the rear of that property is residential. It's either apartments or, uh, some kind of home there. The layout may work better on that space if the vacuums were on the side of the building. So I think limiting them to the rear could be pushing them closer to the residence.
Well, one thing that we would also have to have would be a wall separating that from, uh, residential property. So that would create a separation. I don't know, is there, uh?
Is there a reason we're limiting them to the rear?
Well, the, that's all the existing language, uh, 'cause it's in, in, in your standard tax, so that's, um, what's been done in the past. I guess one thing I would say is rear does, does seem to be, it could be a little bit restrictive, given the amount of, uh, vacuums that are currently, like, standard. Because they, the way they're designed is to have instant access for all the customers. So possibly allowing, taking this and allowing them in side yards could be appropriate. Because then also the way that they, the new, um, vacuums work is that each, each position doesn't have their own vacuum. There's one piece of, uh, equipment that does the, uh, that makes the noise and has all the suction, basically. And they use a tube system that goes out to the individual, individual locations. So they're very good now at modify, at adjusting, um, to, uh, the noise levels. And so, and honestly, the, the thing that causes the most noise is the vacuums, but it's the actual machine. So the things that cause the most noise are actually the overhead vacuums that near the exits and then the vacuum machine there. But given the configuration and given that most cars, car washes now are at least a minimum of a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty feet in length, that's kind of like, uh, putting the, putting the, um, vacuum stations, you know, at least a hundred and forty foot back from the front lot line. So it is a little restrictive if someone wants to put like fifteen, um, vacuums positions. So I could see modifying this to say, permit it in the side or rear yard.
How about not in the front?
Or not in the front.
Yeah, just not in the front.
Yeah, not in the front. Yeah, there you go.
Or not in front, right.
There you go. Much less wordy. I like that. Not in the front.
Yeah, we, I don't have a problem with adding a, a language to make it for the side.
And as far as, uh, noise is concerned, the noise ordinance would apply, it would be redundant to put something in here, right?
Yeah, and besides that, the noise ordinance seems to be very hard to enforce.
Okay.
Um, but we already have an ord, a section that says so many DVs are allowed.
Right, right, exactly.
So I think by, uh, by restricting the location of the equipment, it would, uh, it would be better. So, uh, is everybody, uh, agree with that?
Mm-hmm.
Are there any other comments or questions? Can, uh, can we go ahead and, uh, approve with, with that change?
Yes, with that change, yes.
Okay. So, do we have a motion?
I will make a motion to recommend to city council to adopt the ordinance amendment language in sections one five four dot zero zero five, one five four dot one three seven, one five four dot one three eight with an amendment to subsection B, under layout, modification of the first sentence. An activity shall not be printed, permitted in the front yard only. And adoption of one five four dot two eight six.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, seeing none, uh, take your role, please.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Walls?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Chairperson may.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Okay, now we need to schedule a public hearing, hearing on a proposed ordinance amendment to allow and regulate adult use marijuana facilities as a special land use in M one. Uh, they're looking for a public hearing on September twelfth, twenty twenty four. Just any comments or discussion?
We discussed this in the last meeting. I'm trying to remember this one. Where did this come from?
So, so this is a request by, uh, council. Uh, they would like to, uh, reconsider adult use marijuana uses. Administration, we advise them that we should start from the beginning. While you have looked at a, at a ordinance to allow adult use marijuana in the past, that was, sufficient time has passed since then. We believe it's best to start process from the beginning. So this would be the first step. This would be a zoning ordinance amendment that would, uh, that would consider, that would regulate those use marijuana in the city. And so the first step would be holding a public hearing to see the public opinion.
Should we have language to look at before we schedule a public hearing?
The, the attorney is being, uh, the special attorney for these, this language is being, providing that language to us. So it'll be a ready, it'll be for you, uh, fifteen, at the public hearing deadline, so fifteen days prior to the meeting.
We can make, we don't want it before the public hearing?
Can we make a motion to table this? I mean, I would, I would prefer to have a minute to read it.
I would, I would like to s- Have, uh, some discussion before we have a public hearing.
Yeah, I mean, um, and, and it could be that you, you don't have to have just one public hearing. You don't have to make a motion to approve after the first public hearing. The first public hearing could be a, uh, public gathering.
You could have a public hearing and then table the
If you wanted to, yeah, yeah. Because the, 'cause, you know, given, 'cause the intent is to gather as much public opinion as possible. And if you wanted the initial impressions of people, you could have your first public hearing. And then if you needed to, if you felt like the language was sufficiently different or needed to be adjusted substantively, like you can make changes to language like we just did tonight, to, to do a minor thing that doesn't adjust the substance. But if there's major changes need to be done based on public comment, 'cause, you know, it's, it's not just hearing public comment and then moving on.
That would require another hearing.
Exactly, then you would require another hearing. So you're not in other, in any obligation to make any kind of recommendation after a public hearing. You can have your public hearing, you can discuss it, and then you could motion to table it until a future point.
Oh, that's all.
The idea was, since last time, we didn't really have much comment. We thought maybe we'd try and schedule a public hearing ahead of time and see what people say.
That's a, that's a hot topic too, so you should probably have the public hearing. Like you said, it's not gonna hurt. We can move forward to the next step, but it's just gonna hold back.
Do you know what city council meeting this was discussed at?
N- I do not. But I do know that they, it was directed by council members to, to start the process again.
All right.
Well, why don't we go into this thinking that we'll have the public hearing and that we think there's enough that we need to think it over a little bit, we can table it and, and follow the
Yeah, okay.
Someone care to make a motion to schedule a public hearing?
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for September twelfth, two thousand twenty four.
Support?
Motion is made and supported. Any questions or comments on the motion? Take your role, please.
Mr. Walls?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Chairperson may.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, commissioners, comments on planning and zoning matters?
I don't know anything.
Anything?
No.
Just the McKenna work on the Kmart property?
Yeah, so, um, coming at the, should, yeah, we'll be, at, starting at the next meeting, we will have the kickoff process for the housing resiliency study. And so within that scope of work will be the, uh, discussion points about, it'll outline the planning process that we'll go through, and that will include, uh, the consideration of housing, uh, alternatives for the Kmart site. So that's one aspect of it. And then, um, so that's what our main focus is right now. I mean, we still have the opportunity, we wanted to, to go over, um, making recommendations about doing an economic development plan for the site specifically as well. But there are also other efforts underway to do economic, uh, community, um, excuse me, yeah, community development through economic, uh, promotion. We're, we're beginning, we're just beginning, uh, inventories of vacant commercial property and eventually we're going to try and market those sites.
It is interesting, just for the other commissioners, I, I, I think everyone's heard about the, the five in Farmington, Livonia downtown, their building. And I was just reading about Westland over by like where the old service merchandise was. They're making an invest, they're making an investment there, cotton and something, the ideas. We gotta get moving.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Okay, nothing to add?
Um. Jake, did you have anything?
Nothing tonight. Thank you though.
Very well.
Nothing else, no?
Nothing new, huh? Okay, well then. Uh, next regular meeting of the planning commission will be Thursday, September twelfth, twenty twenty four. Have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All of it? All who made and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's adjourned, uh, meeting's adjourned.